Let me, let me try this again. You think by now I'd remember to unmute, but anyhow, welcome to Bedford City Council, regular meeting of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. As I was saying before, I unmuted myself. You might notice some, some of us has masks on because for the first time in about a year, we are sitting together in council chambers. We are spread out, we're probably about eight feet apart. So we're social distancing, we're wearing our masks. And you'll notice the people that don't have masks are back in their own offices, or Paula is at home. So again, welcome everybody and let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Here.
Coche.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Janutus. Fluharty.
Here.
Mizek.
Here.
And council, you have a motion to amend the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting agenda to remove section five presentations and section eight new business subsection A and renumber the agenda accordingly. Can I have a motion to do such? By Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
Uh, council, you have the minutes of the special work session of March first, twenty twenty-one. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Janutus, second by Mizek. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the work session of March first, twenty twenty-one. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March first, twenty twenty-one. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Mizek, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
And we have no old business tonight. We will move on to reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items I have tonight, first and foremost. I also just want to continue to remind the public, please follow us on social media and, and most importantly, visit our website regarding all of the up-to-date information regarding the COVID nineteen, especially the information that has recently been released regarding the vaccinations and the ability to sign up. Last week, we shared with the public the website that the state of Ohio created, where you can go on and, and sign up if you are eligible, given the current parameters. That website is getthe shot dot coronavirus dot ohio dot gov. So please, if you, if you are still looking and you meet those guidelines, you can find that information on our website as well as our social media outlets. So again, just wanted to continue to share that information. I also wanted to share that, you know, we have had some inquiries regarding some of the events and summertime events that, that take place on our square. I do want to mention that although right now there's nothing scheduled, we're unable to do that, given the governor's current guidelines. Although he has shared that there should be some information coming out in the coming weeks regarding events, festivals, fairs, parades. We are eagerly waiting to see what those possible changes may be. And I am happy to say that our, our offices have been in communication with a number of the organizations that put on some of our events downtown. And we are keeping our fingers crossed as they are that we will be able to have some things later this year. So stay tuned. As soon as we hear of things, we will share it. But understand that it is something that's on our radar and we are, like many of those organizations, also trying to plan accordingly and continuing to be optimistic. One of those, as we get into later in the meeting, you'll see legislation for a project on Ellenwood and our, our wishes to do some infrastructure work there, replacing the water line. We bid this project early this year with the plan that we will be opening our municipal pool. And again, we're keeping our fingers crossed. Our staff has been working on, on guidelines and, and a number of different plans to adhere to any scenario that may arise, but we are, we are planning that this year. Along with other infrastructure projects, as previously mentioned, our next one, we will be bidding our street program. So look for that advertisement to come out. We will be resurfacing numerous streets to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars. You'll also see later in this meeting, a project for Union Street with some engineering work to work with Cuyahoga County. And then we are also, as we've mentioned, in the design phase for a major infrastructure program down Broadway. So stay tuned for that information. And lastly, I want to mention that kudos to a number of our departments who have worked on grants throughout the year. We were awarded a fifteen thousand dollar grant through the EPA for EV electric vehicle charging stations. These charging stations would be installed in the historic district and we'll be further discussing those plans with the EPA and our staff prior to any construction. So look for that project later this year, as well as a forty-five thousand dollar grant we received through Cuyahoga County for some maintenance work to take place on the Egbert Road Bridge. So kudos to our staff that have worked on those projects or on those grant applications as they were successful. With that, end of report.
Thank you. Our law director.
The law director indicated that he does not have a report this evening.
Okay, thank you. And our finance director.
Okay, really quick, three things. Happy St. Patrick's Day, first of all. I know everybody's going to say that. Due dates for taxes, April fifteenth still this year. It has not been extended, so those returns need to come in. If you haven't done so and put it together, we do have the department not meeting face-to-face with the public, but if you'll slide the W two's in our mailbox through our window at City Hall or mail them in, we will process the forms. If you get those in within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to get that in and out and bill you, giving you time to pay by April fifteenth on any amounts due. So get those in right away if you're expecting us to help you with that service because, before the fifteenth comes along. Also, finally, we are going to have some American Rescue Plan dollars coming our way. The city will be studying the requirements of the funding of that and what we can utilize those funds for, and we'll be running that through council in the near future as soon as we find out more of that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. City Council, Mr. Saunders.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate Frank's comment. Happy St. Patrick's Day to all our Irish residents. And at the same time, I got a couple of questions for Mike. You know when our chipper program's going to start back up because people started cleaning their yards last week and I had several call and say, can we put them out? And I've noticed others just put them out.
Chipper, the chipper service will start the first full week of April and then it will continue, it'll continue each month after that until the fall.
Okay, and two other questions. Union Street Bridge, the county did an inspection on that. Do you have any report off of that yet? That's technically not a bridge. It's an earthen-filled structure and it's very old. Hopefully they, if there needs repairs, they'll repair it instead of replace it. But who knows how to, what came out of it? When I worked there, I'd know, but I don't know if you've heard anything.
There's a substantial amount of work that has to take place on that. The main issue is the amount of underground utilities that run under, or run underneath the roadway. It's going to be, make things very, very difficult. I will tell you, obviously it's safe right now, but it's going to need to be addressed in, in, in the near future and those discussions are taking place. They've discussed, you know, obviously doing the improvements to the current bridge. And there's also been some outside-the-box conversations as far as constructing a whole new bridge and abandoning that one. I'm not sure where that stands yet, but we, our engineering office has been in communications with Cuyahoga County regarding that project.
Because the roadway itself that's on that bridge is a separate entity. It's a paved road over the earth and fill that's in that, those arches. So they could rip the road out and hopefully replace what they need to with utilities. However, with the condition of the actual structure itself, that, that would make a big determination as to what they do, I'm sure. The other question. Mike's off to the side.
I'm, I'm multitasking, I can hear you.
Okay, Northfield Road Bridge. The state's been out there inspecting it here lately. I'm hoping while they're doing the inspection, one, that's probably the only Corten steel built or steel bridge in northeast Ohio that hasn't been painted. So hopefully it hasn't rusted through the I-beams yet. I'm sure the inspection that they're doing on it right now will determine something of that nature. But at the same time, I'm hoping that they'll rip off that four-inch concrete sidewalk that's on there, sandblast the curb plates, repaint them and then seal everything, including the parapets, which are starting to come apart because nobody's maintained that bridge for so long. So I don't know if you've got communication with ODOT on that, but they need to do something serious because I saw somebody walking over the other day that tripped on that sidewalk because it's in such bad shape. But while ODOT's out there with their inspection crews, maybe Clint or somebody can go out there and recommend to that inspection crew that the rest of this needs to be done too, not just the understructure.
We, so it, I'm, I'm not sure if you recall, we, we met with, when we were negotiating with ODOT to move up the Broadway Avenue project to later, or to twenty twenty-two. One of our other discussions was the condition of that bridge. We've actually provided them, I believe, over eighty or over a hundred and some photos. This started back about three years ago. Most recently, we did that last year and we had a meeting right before, you know, the pandemic occurred. And they did share with us that that is on their list and they're going to be looking at doing some work. What that work entails, I, I don't know. But the fact that they're out there, obviously doing some survey work and things like that, you know, that's a good sign. The, the fencing is in very, very poor condition, all of which we've been documenting for years and sharing that with ODOT. And we are, again, like I said, not only did they move up the Broadway Avenue project, they did indicate that that was on their list to address. When I get a timeline on that, I'll share it with the council.
Yeah, I'm sure they don't have the millions to replace that bridge. So the sooner they get to some repair work on it, and if you're walking across that bridge, don't, do not lean on the fence or you go over with it. But some of the metal expansion joints that are on that bridge have rusted through at the curb line too. So there's some work that really needs to be done on that bridge before it really becomes costly. All right, thank you.
I'm trying to unmute, hold on.
There you go.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. And I'm the only one on council that were there agreeing tonight. I am artist, so happy St. Patrick, early St. Patrick's Day to everyone. Dawn actually got the answer to one of the questions about the chipper because I do have a lot of residents that had some tree limbs and stuff down from the last storm and so I'll be having them contact you, Mike. Mike, also, um, are we going to be doing any patching? I've noticed I've got a couple of streets that after the winter are really pretty bad with some pretty deep pot, of course, Green Corr and Tudor, those seem to come back every year. But I do have to give kudos to the, to the snowplow drivers this year. I, so far, I've only seen one curb that was knocked off. So that was really good. It was a good, because we had some deep snows. Okay, did talk to you, Mike, earlier about the speeding again this weekend and today. I was out in the yard decorating Willard Flora Grand. It's just getting crazy again. Any update? I know everything was set back because of COVID and everything. Anything on those flashing signs that were?
We have, we have them and they'll be going up very soon.
Okay, okay. Because yeah, it was like particularly bad today. I know I spoke to you earlier about a couple incidents and everything. If you're out and about, take a drive down the Grand Boulevard and two-six-five. It kind of looks like Easter threw up in my yard again. I started this a couple of years ago decorating for Easter for my grandchildren and it's kind of got out of hand now. I have a lot of fun with it. And so if you get a chance, come out, you can stop. You're more than welcome to get your picture taken in my front yard. Just watch out for the deer poop because the deer have been very nosy to see what's going on in the yard. So, uh, end of report.
Well, yeah, happy don't get to go to Fred, I suppose.
You're muted.
Here we go.
Unmute.
Hey, all right, back again. Okay, so my, my fingers aren't working the way they're supposed to. Okay, well, thank you. A couple of things. I'll try to be brief. Benefit. And, but, since, here's one. Welcome to the Bedford Garden Club. Since nineteen twenty-seven, Bedford Garden Club continues to be one of the leading service clubs in the Bedford area. And we just got word from Bedford Garden Club welcoming all of us and they really do good stuff. I won't get into all, everything they're going to do here because it's difficult to talk with this mask. But everyone is encouraged to join the Bedford Garden Club and you could get in touch with them. Bedfordgardenclub.com. So that's something everyone should be encouraged to do. They do great work around town and it's a great organization to be part of. Also, well, Paula, this will not be as good as National Squirrel Day. However, this is, April is Ohio Native Plant Month. So there's the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District is encouraging people to grow a pollinator garden and help the birds and the bees and whatnot. So I think that's a great idea. And also they make mention here of making a rain garden, which is something citizens may want to inquire about because it's an opportunity for horticulture as infrastructure to help with our stormwater remediation throughout the city because we know that stormwater is, is a big concern and ongoing problem that's increasing. So there are some opportunities gardening-wise to help overcome that. So, uh, end of report, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of little things here, actually just one thing. The Bedford Nazarene Church is having another food handout drive. It's March twenty-second, which is a week from tonight, from six to eight. They're handing out boxes of food with all kinds of things like fruit and vegetables and everything, fresh stuff from a farmer's, some kind of market area or whatever they're getting all this food from. But he's always looking for, for some people that need some help. And it's not just open to Bedford, it's anybody that wants to come and get it. And he's located up here on Center Road here, crossing the old St. Pius area. I don't know the actual address, but it's right across the street. Also, let's see here, everybody else already said what I was going to say, so I can just say happy Easter, everybody, because we won't be back till afterwards. So happy Easter. Thank you, end of report.
This is Mizek.
Yeah, here I am. How are you? Thank you for having us all in your living rooms or on your iPads or wherever you're watching us. Wally, before we even get started, today is ready, and I can attest to this one, National Nap Day. Because there's someone in my house that I'm going to say happy St. Patrick's birthday to, who I call Rip, will be celebrating his seventy-fifth birthday on St. Patrick's Day. So that means corned beef cabbage in my house. Well, other than that, like you said, everybody asked the questions, the chipper service, party in the parks. Mike, shred day. Will we be having a shred day?
Yes, we will be having two shred days, actually, and one other item. Our household hazardous waste and computer roundup. We're finalizing those plans where you can, our residents can take that, those products down to our service garage. That'll be the last two weeks of April, as well as the last two weeks of August. And our two shred days are scheduled, I'm sorry, they're in the process of being scheduled. Those will take place early June and in September. Once we have the exact dates, we will get that information out in the water bill, social media and our website. But we are going to have two shred days, yes.
Thank you. I did hear from the pastor of the Baptist church at the corner of Turney and West Glendale. She was very thankful and also her parishioners were very happy to hear the news about the gentleman that was interrupting their services. She appreciates what we've, we're trying to do in keeping the neighborhood very well secure. And also, I was going to say, um, the new doors, the opening doors at City Hall have made it very convenient to come in and go over into, see Ani or walk over to the police department and that they really, the people that have been talking to, like the doors opening for them for a change instead of them opening the door for somebody. And once again, I wanted to say thank you to the service department because we had the sinkhole on West Glendale this week. And also another thank you to CEI. They called our neighbors in the surrounding area of West Glendale, Broadmoor and on our street, Big Santa Circle, in regards to tomorrow from nine to one, our power will be shut off for that period of time because they're redoing new poles with brand-new canisters for the transformers. And I can say that there has been an alien in my backyard as of ten o'clock this morning. One of the pieces of equipment, they asked me if they could keep it here overnight so they don't have to cart it back and forth for the rest of the week for the work. And I, I says anytime you would like any help, we'd be glad to oblige to it because we, we need you. Our services with the electric company are very good. And I just want to say thank you for the gentleman that have been very good to the neighborhood this morning to greet all the neighbors and let them know that they were doing work in any area. So thank you and end of reports. Any questions you can ask?
I just have one question for Mike. We're probably going to go out for bids for streets, striping pretty soon. I wonder if we might add that they do all the striping on the streets, not just the long striping. It seems their paint lasts way longer than the paint we use and I think it'd be worth a little more investment to get the paint that lasts. Just check into it to see if it's economically feasible. I, I think that'd be a good thing. I do have a, a personal note that I want to share. My granddaughter Madison will be graduating from Bowling Green University in May. And she just got a call from her college president. She's been on the dean's list every semester she's been at school. And they just announced that she will be graduating magna cum laude.
Beautiful, beautiful. Hooray, God bless her.
Thank you. And my wife and I couldn't be more proud of the effort she's put in. And she's not even crazy about school. I don't know what she do, if she really liked it. She wants to graduate and get on with things. But we're just so proud and especially in this time of the COVID and doing classes at home in her apartment and it's been so tough on all the kids, which, which brings me to, if other people out there have some special things they want to say about their graduates or special events that came up for them, please let me know. I'd be happy to announce it here at the meetings because, like I say, especially during this COVID, for any kid to, to even graduate has been a phenomenal event through this year with the pressure these poor kids have been under. And like I say, I'm just so proud of my granddaughter and, and she did this while working three different jobs and just, just a kid. I just had to brag a little bit, but like you say, if anybody else has something, just, just email me or text me and, and we'll see about getting it in here at the meeting because I, I think the accomplishments of our young kids are real important. And with that, let's get on to business. Oh Falcons, yes. Ordinance number ninety-eight fifty-six dash twenty-one. And ordinance, amending ordinance number ninety-eight twenty-seven dash twenty, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford, Ohio during the year twenty twenty-one and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension. By Janutus, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion for third and final. By Mizek, second by Fluharty. Frank, do you want to do this?
Sure. On this ordinance, we're looking at some of the major items. We're allowing for an advance outback to the General Fund Reserve Fund to set money aside for the COVID, any hits that we have based on net profits losses and things like that in the income tax, revenue side and expense side on refunds. We're allowing SEAL program income. We did have some more confiscated funds in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars there. We are setting up the Union Street expenditures that we're going to be appropriating. That being the full amount of the engineering at thirty-six thousand seven fifty, but it looks like our share of that will only be fourteen thousand seven hundred. And then a hundred fifty thousand will be our estimated twenty percent cost of the project itself when they do the Union Street project and the seven hundred fifty thousand. when they do the Union Street project and the $750,000 estimate that's out there now. And finally, we are budgeting for the Chanel, the Bedford Board Education costs of demolishing the last parts of costs that are associated to the Chanel demo. That's counsel to prove that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders. Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 9857-21. An ordinance authorizing the approval of engineering fee to GPD Group for its services regarding design costs associated with the repair and resurfacing of Union Street in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
And I have a motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Janutus. Mike or Frank, once we get it.
I, I could take it, that's fine. As you're aware, Kaihoga County is, has plans to resurface Union Street this year. You know, we had discussions with them to extend that project, not just from Broadway to Norfield, but to extend the whole length of Union from Broadway to Broadway, which is what's going to happen. We had two requests. The first was for Kaihoga County to allow us to design the project. And the second request was to allow us to manage the project and manage the construction. We felt that we can get this project started much sooner. They did allow us to, for the design. However, they are going to manage that. This ordinance is in reflection of the design costs. You can see that are $36,750. And this is for the, the design of this project, of which Kaihoga County is going to reimburse the city 60% of that.
Any questions?
One, one other, one other thing, I, I apologize. I just wanted to add, we will have this project, all of the design and documents turned over to Kaihoga County first week of April. Now, I don't know how soon they'll be able to move forward on the bidding process. To be quite honest with you, I don't see the project starting until possibly September. But we are going to push them and, and try to get this performed as soon as possible. But for the sake of time, we will be ready to go by the first week of April.
Good, something we've been waiting for a long time. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
You did it. Where'd Paula go?
I did, yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you, sorry. Okay, ordinance number 9858-21. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with M&amp;G Pools LLC for the, for the, for the, for the costs associated with opening and closing of the municipal pool and declaring an emergency. They have a motion for suspension by Janutus, second by Fluhardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in my report earlier, it's our plans to prepare for a summer season with the municipal pool. In the past, we have hired seasonal employees, as well as an individual who has assisted us with the opening and closing of the pool for decades. Unfortunately, the individual is unable to return this year, compounded by the fact that our outdoor pool was idle last year. There's a very good chance we're going to run into some additional repairs as we get this, as we get the facility ready for the summer. So we went, we acquired quotes from two professional companies. M&amp;G Pools came in at just over $11,000 at 11,4940, as well as a quote from Pro Pool and Spa, which came in at $12,700. Our recommendation is that we move forward with M&amp;G Pools. We will, it is about, it's a little bit over what we typically spend when we hire our, our seasonal staff anyways. But I think it would be money well spent to bring in the, the professional company to prepare and get, help us get ready for the upcoming season. And we recommend moving forward sooner than later so we can start that, as it does take months to get that up and running.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, especially the length of time that pool's been closed, that there could be some serious issues there. So it sounds like a good idea. Any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9859-21. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Terrace Construction Company, Inc. For the Ellenwood Waterline Replacement Project, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion for suspension? Janutus, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yeah.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Miesak.
Question.
Question. Yeah, I was just gonna have, I think you want to take this?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. This is, this ordinance is in regards to the infrastructure waterline replacement project on Ellenwood that we designed, actually, we designed late last year. Our intent is to replace the waterline from Broadway to Kenyon. We went out for bids, we actually received six bids. Terrace Construction came in at the, the low bid. They came in at $424,031.50. The next closest was at $435,000 and some change. We included in that base bid, we included an alternative. And that was to resurface the entire roadway and not just the area over where the waterline is being replaced. Those numbers came in very favorably. This project, our engineer estimate for the entire project was $513,000. So as you could see, we're about $85,000 under the estimate. And we recommend moving forward with that waterline replacement, as well as the road resurfacing. We would like to move on this or begin the project as soon as possible. There's a 60-day completion or an estimate to complete. And we want to have all of this buttoned up, finished, as we're prepared to open the municipal pool, fingers crossed, later this summer.
Don, you had a question?
Yeah, Mike, you happen to know what size water main that's going to be?
Did have it done. I will, it's an eight inch.
Eight inch? You know, we pay a premium for eight inch. Because ductile iron pipes only fade now in, in six inch increments. So I hope they looked at it as to what the cost difference would have been to go to bigger size. Because there's a lot of cases, not much of a price difference at all. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
And we come to the hearing of the citizens. If you have a question, please send it, email it to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. And we do have one.
We actually, Mayor, we have a few questions. I'll go ahead and read if that's okay.
Okay.
First question is from Jim Slifka from 130 Grand Boulevard. His question, he says, I know the answer last year was Union Street was to be paved in the spring of 2020. So what's up? As mentioned in some of the ordinances recently passed, Kaihoga County has this project planned for this year, 2021. We actually, earlier this year, we passed an ordinance entering into agreement with county, with Kaihoga County to have Union Street resurfaced from Broadway to Broadway. This is an extension of the original plans. And just this evening, we did pass an ordinance reflecting the costs associated with the engineering fees for that. So Mr. Slifka, I, I, I understand, you know, we're all frustrated that this has been delayed. But you know, fingers crossed and things look like they are taking place and, and planning for this year. Next, next, next question I have is from Patty Cerna. The question is, why isn't there signage on 271 going south off of Broadway, letting everyone know which way to go for Route Eight? It is so confusing. I can't tell you how many times I still end up in Twinsburg. I have done the same thing. I think some of it is, is getting used to, obviously, the changes in that, in that highway. But Ms. Cerna, we, we can look at that signage and make possible recommendations to ODOT. The city's not responsible for that, the, the signage on the, the highway. But we will look into that concern and, and share that concern, obviously. Okay. Next question I have from Cindy Cracora at 99 Wondell Avenue. The only qualifications to be a councilperson is stated on the city council page is that you must live in the ward for six months, live in the municipality for six months, and not hold any public office. It further states in the absence or incapacity, the mayor and vice mayor, a majority of council may appoint an acting mayor. However, nowhere does it state that the mayor, vice mayor and current council have the authority to appoint a council seat to be filled with a candidate of their choosing should one open because of health, death or other reason. With that said, why was Jeff Asbury not immediately sworn in to the Ward Five Council position, being the second runner up in the last election and recommended slash endorsed by the existing Ward Five Council person? I will, I think the law director would be able to answer that. Cindy, one second.
Hi Cindy, the answer is you're looking at, you're not looking at the correct section. There's Article Two, Section Four regarding vacancies, which addresses and gives the council the power of, an authority to pick a replacement. And it's in the charter, yeah, the charter, Article Two, Section Four of the charter. So they do have the power to do so.
And checking one last time, that is all of the questions and comments. That's all of them that have been submitted.
All right. And reminder to council, we need to hang around for a executive session after the meeting to finish up some of the items we had before the regular meeting started. So can I have a motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Janutus? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yeah.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluhardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
And thank you, everybody. Good night, happy St. Patty's Day.